The Board of Chosen Freeholders meeting this Tuesday, the 24th, 2015. We begin with our conference agenda. I would like to call upon the clerk of the board, Mr. Lou Ampoff, for the roll call.
Freeholders Bartlett, Gus, Antonio, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Lawrence.
Here. We will call upon the Administrator, Lieutenant, and Senator for the Administrator's work.
Thank you very much, Director. First on the agenda, we have a presentation of Business Appreciation Award. We have I Fortress located in the Barrow Woodland Park. We have Mr. Jerry Lyons here.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to ask Freeholder LaFour, since he hails from the great Barrow Woodland Park, to present you with the proclamation. You can step over to the podium.
My pleasure. Very honored. Hi, it's so nice to see you. Yes.
There we go.
All right, get right down to the floor. Whereas the State County Board of Chosen Freeholders is committed to maintaining the optimum quality of life for its business community, ensuring access to capital, excellent transportation routes, and an educated field labor force. This Board is particularly proud of the business community and its accomplishments, and as such desires to honor and promote I Fortress. And whereas I Fortress was founded in 2003 by Jerry Lyons and his sophisticated Board of Directors in Woodland Park, New Jersey, I Fortress custom engineered and manufactures the I Fortress X-Site ITX and the Shelter ITX, providing the highest performing, most reliable, efficient, and secure mission critical solutions available worldwide for data centers and other high-volume, high-value applications. I Fortress customers include Johnson &amp; Johnson, IBM, Telehouse, Hewlett-Hewitt, Iron Mountain, General Dynamics, Puma, Samsung, Upco Bank, Angleton Hospital, U.S. Department of Homeland Security, U.S. Department of the Navy, U.S. Central Intelligence Agency, the U.S. Army, and the U.S. Department of State. And the company's philosophy is to ensure the lives and livelihoods of those who depend on your IT operations by ensuring that the short and long-term survivability, sustainability, and functionality objectives of your organization are met with the finest, highest quality, most efficient, and secure mission critical solutions worldwide. I Fortress has demonstrated its commitment to the county of the state through the employment of local residents, continued reinvestment in their company, and their strong leadership. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of the State as it hereby publicly presents the Passaic County Business Appreciation Award to I Fortress for its continued commitment to the community, and be in further proclaimed that this Board extends sincere best wishes to I Fortress for continued success.
And we do all that right here in Woodland Park, all around the world. It is a real pleasure working in this county. The support that we have, I'm born, raised in New Jersey, and being a manufacturer and crosshairs of two major economic industries in the world, security and IT, it's really, it's amazing what we can accomplish right here in New Jersey, and I hope to continue to support. Congratulations. Sure. Been honored. Well, thank you. Jerry.
Right in the middle. Right in the middle. There we go. Freeholder Duffy. Want to take it next to him?
Yeah, right here. Use my hand. Oh, all right. Sorry. It's not a good idea. Terry Duffy, solution for Terry Duffy. Terry Duffy, food by him. There we go. There you go. Thank you very much. Terry, I'm glad you're here. There you go. Stone this out.
Yes, yes. Okay, goodbye. Thank you so much.
There you go. Congratulations. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have recognition proclamation proclaiming November Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in the County of the State, particularly November 13th is World Pancreatic Cancer Day throughout the world. And we are honored, as always, to have Mr. Michael Weinstein here with us, who is a volunteer, but more importantly, a pancreatic cancer survivor. So, Mr. Weinstein, why don't you come forward, give us a little update on what's going on with this dreaded disease? It is great to have you, great to see you. You look fantastic. We all are feeling well.
Well, as you know, pancreatic cancer is the fourth leading cause of cancer death in America. This year is projected that there will be almost 49,000 incidences of people diagnosed, which almost 41,000 will pass away. In New Jersey, almost 2,000 residents will pass away this year from pancreatic cancer. The numbers, as I've stated here unfortunately, are not getting any better. The incidences continue to grow, and by the year 2020, it's expected that pancreatic cancer will become the second leading cause of cancer death in America. One of the new things we are trying to do for awareness is we are doing a World Pancreatic Cancer Day now, in addition to November Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. And on November 13th, we had people from around the world raising awareness about this horrible disease. We, in this area, we live in New York, and we are holding our signs of that Good Morning America show, as well as I was privileged to be with a group of people who rang the closing bell in Massacre this year. It's pretty neat to see the photo up on the side of their building in Times Square, all the purple up there. As always, the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the foremost and the only organization in the United States that is dealing with this disease in a comprehensive manner, including patient support through Patient Central, education and outreach, fundraising. We had a very successful purpose drive November 8th, and as well as advocacy for a cure. I was privileged to be in Washington in June, once again, for advocacy day, meeting with our representatives down there. So, we hope to continue to make some kind of progress. We are making progress in awareness. There is increased fundraising, there is increased research that is out there currently. The problem is that anything that is developed, from the time it's developed until the time it can be on the market, is a very long process, that takes 10 to 15 years before anything new is out there starting to develop. So, we continue to try and keep that process going, and get funding from the government so that, you know, something in progress doesn't have to stop because of a lack of funding, and then to his latest start from the beginning.
Do you mind reminding everyone how many years prior to Monday?
I will be very fortunate, I will be very thankful on Thursday, Thanksgiving Day, because on Thursday I will become a 10-year survivor. As is very unusual, only about 50% survive the first six months of diagnosis. 27% survive that first year, and the five-year survival rate is only 7%. It's the lowest survival rate in cancer, and the only one that's in single digits.
I think the only thing that always strikes me in the research today of $105 million, I guess if 1.8% of all research goes towards pancreatic cancer, which is pretty remarkable that such a little amount of money would go into research for pancreatic cancer of all the billions of dollars. And I have to believe that if more money was spent on research, we would be able to at least accomplish early detection.
The statistics show that the cancers that have had the most funding from the National Cancer Institute also have the higher five-year survival rate. Breast cancer is at 90% five-year survival rate, prostate is almost at 100% five-year survival rate, and pancreatic cancer, which has had the least amount of funding from the National Cancer Institute, have only 2% there as of the present day.
That's really because of early detection. Ways of detecting early, unfortunately pancreatic cancer, so cancer that once diagnosed, most times is too late.
Very true. And I have the personal experience at that now, because in January I went for a routine physical, my annual exam, and my DS level was, BSA level was up a little bit, and my doctor said we should check it out. I went to a neurologist, I had a biopsy, I needed a prostate cancer, and I had surgery, robotic surgery for even prostate. And that took place from January to May, May 19th, I had surgery. One night I was in a hospital with a surgeon that you should have for recovery, 100% normal cancer, which is totally opposite of what you would hear when you're diagnosed with pancreatic cancer. So, I now call myself the bookend of cancers and the highest survival rate.
Well, let's hope that's it. No more, no more bookends. Well, the Director has honored me and allowed me to present this proclamation to you. As you are aware, and I think most people are aware, that was my dad, 23 years with pancreatic cancer. And he, at the time, was given six months of living, 18 months. Also, it's pretty good, blessed month, but we were very fortunate, but how fortunate and how blessed you are to have survived 10 years is incredible. You've become a part of our Passaic County family here, and we look forward to this today. So, if you would join me over at the podium, I will present the proclamation, and then the Freeholders will come down for a photo.
Whereas the Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic is aware that November 13th, 2015, has been designated nationally as World Pancreatic Cancer Day. And whereas in 2015, an estimated 48,960 people, nothing really estimated, people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 40,560 will die from the disease. And whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers, is currently the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is projected to become the second by 2020. And whereas pancreatic cancer is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits, at just 7%, and whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is generally late-stage, and 73% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of the diagnosis, while 93% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. And whereas approximately 1,560 deaths will occur in New Jersey in 2015, and whereas pancreatic cancer is the seventh most common cause of cancer-related death in men and women across the world, and whereas there will be an estimated 367,000 new pancreatic cancer cases diagnosed globally in 2015. And whereas the good health and well-being residents of the County of Passaic are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection causes and effective treatment. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Board of Chosen Freeholders of the County of Passaic that the month of November 2015 is hereby designated as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in the County of Passaic. Signs I hold for Freeholders. So, if you see. Have a sure old as law, take a picture of the fact. See next year. This is all themselves. Take it here.
Before we conclude, I just want to share to Mr. Weinstein.
Mr. Weinstein, I just want to say briefly that you have mentioned something about specifically being a survivor, 10 years, which is great. But I think something that we've all noticed over the time that we serve here, especially for me over the three years, beyond being a survivor, you are a champion of all those who survived, and you continue to raise awareness, which I believe was highlighted as a big concern in regards to pancreatic cancer when it comes to early detection. And I just want to thank you so very much for reminding us each year and every November to keep an eye on that and to be able to assist in anything possible. So, I thank you for not only being a survivor, but for being a champion. So, back there.
I believe that the county employees came together to raise almost $1,000 that's going to go over to our Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Committee, and I believe in honor of not only all those who have been personally impacted, such as our Administrator, as well as you and all of those individuals in New Jersey, we'll be requesting of our members' dollar to see if we can light up Lambert's Tower Purple, something that was brought to our attention by Freeholder Bartlett, and we can now do it. We'll be doing that in Passaic County, so please look for that. Thank you very much. I feel so much. Now, moving on to the review of our agenda, K-1 and L-1 through L-49. Are there any concerns or discussions? No? County Council, do we have any late starters?
Yes, we do, Mr. Director. For you, there are four proposed late starters. R-50 would be a resolution authorizing purchase of various items quite at the same cost as office. That resolution was approved by the Royal Public Assembly Committee last week. We do some great thinking about our agenda, but that one probably didn't go through committee. So, that's R-50. Or L? Resolution, I guess, with the K-51, a resolution authorizing State County Sheriff's Department to purchase advertising from Cablevision in the amount of $100,000 for the X-Tip program. Yes. R-51. L-52, a resolution authorizing option to maneuver contract to Millennium Communications Group, the Division of Private Cable Maintenance, Florida County for the bid. This is the second option. This was approved at the Finance Administration Committee. Due to misunderstanding, it was only done today, and I do would ask that be put on, because it was approved by the committee at the last meeting. And the last item, L-53, is a resolution recognizing the Syrian refugee crisis and affirming Passaic County as a place where all are welcome.
County Council, at this moment, I'm going to request Freeholder Bartlett to please read the resolution so that it can go onto record, and also, so I'd like to highlight this as something that's extremely dear and near to Freeholder Bartlett, who's extremely passionate about it, and we would like to.
After we've finished, one other item I just wanted to bring to you.
Sure, I made it to amendment. Yes, here we go.
Thank you very much, Director. For you, to everyone involved in the wonderful news, not only horrible stories out of France and Lebanon and elsewhere, but also the ongoing crisis of refugees flowing out of Syria. And unfortunately, in recent days, we've seen some political demagoguery of that issue that really unfortunately is deeply at odds with facts and how the refugee system in the United States works, as well as being, for me, a reminder of some of the United States' worst moments, when we judge peoples, whether because of their ethnic background, or religion, or any other attribute, and representative of some particular political viewpoint that is not necessarily true. And with that in mind, I appreciate the support of my colleagues, and I'm happy to read this into the record, and particularly happy to be doing so with Mayor Mohamed Khalil, who is himself some of Syrian backgrounds, and here in Passaic County, to be with us, the mayor. This is a resolution recognizing Syrian refugee crisis and affirming Passaic County as a place where all are welcome. Whereas the County of Passaic is proud to be one of the most ethnically and religiously diverse counties in the world, where one in four residents is an immigrant or the child of an immigrant. And whereas the County of Passaic has a rich history of opening its arms at homes to immigrants and the vulnerable and disadvantaged, and those who come have consistently helped build a bright future in the county for their families and all of us. And whereas the conflict in Syria has created the single largest refugee crisis in almost a quarter of a century, with 7 million Syrians displaced by war, and more than 4 million refugees fleeing to neighboring countries and beyond. And whereas refugees entering the United States are subject to the highest level of security checks of any category of traveler to our country, resulting in a 14-step intake process that typically takes at least two years, including three fingerprints, multiple interviews, health screening, and review by the National Counterterrorism Center, the FBI's Terrorist Screening Center, and the Departments of State, Defense, and Homeland Security. And I would point out that all of those checks are part of the existing procedure, not the proposed type of procedure that passed through the House of Representatives last week, but in fact, it is simply rolling in now and the process through which all refugees currently go. And whereas the Constitution of the United States acknowledges the supremacy of federal government power in the field of foreign affairs, including power over immigration, naturalization, and deportation. And whereas the U.S. Refugee Act of 1980 declared it to be the historic policy of the United States to respond to the urgent needs of persons subject to persecution in their homelands, and gave the President the power to respond to an unforeseen emergency refugee situation, such as one involving grave humanitarian concerns. And whereas, although the United States admits only 70,000 refugees per year from a global population of more than 14 million refugees, President Barack Obama has committed to accepting 10,000 Syrian refugees in response to the shocking and tragic displacement of millions of Syrians. And whereas even this modest effort to relieve the suffering of many has been met with political opposition from elected officials and political candidates, including Governor Chris Christie, whose public remarks indicate a misunderstanding of the rigorous refugee screening process already in place, and of the cohort of Syrian refugees being admitted to the United States, of whom half are children, and only 2% are single men of combat age. And whereas by attempting to refuse Syrian refugees' entrance to New Jersey and instructing state agencies not to assist the federal government in relocating Syrian refugees, Governor Christie proposes to violate the U.S. Constitution, which, as a governor and before that as the United States Attorney, these swords uphold. Now therefore be it resolved in recognition of our common humanity, and of the many communities of faith and common interest of Passaic County who would welcome and sponsor Syrian refugees if given the opportunity. Passaic County reaffirms that it is a place where all are welcome, and where those fleeing persecution may find safe refuge. And be it further resolved that the County of Passaic urges departments, local businesses, and charitable organizations to work with those organizations who provide shelter and sustenance to refugee families relocating to Passaic County and integrate them to our community. And be it further resolved that the Clerk of the Board is hereby instructed to convey copies of this motion to the Parliament to the Office of the President of the United States, the Governor of the State of New Jersey, the fourteen members of the New Jersey Civil National Delegation, and the twenty other Freeholder boards in the State of New Jersey.
I would like to provide the opportunity for any of my colleagues, if they have any questions or comments regarding you, Mr. President.
While I pray with all the three directors, putting together this well-thought-out, ball loaded resolution, it's sad that, first of all, if this is happening, we have this humanity toll taken place in Europe. I want to applaud the European countries that have opened their arms and borders, seeing the overwhelming numbers of refugees. And the tragedy of the events in Paris notwithstanding, it just shows you the difference between the leadership there in regards to the human goal, and the leadership here, or some of the leadership here, that tries to compound misery being faced by these poor unfortunate individuals, who are doing what any one of us would do in the same situation, to try to save our own lives, save our families' lives, and put us in a situation where we can, you know, follow the pursuit of happiness that we so cherish in our own Constitution. So, I want to thank you, Freeholder, for taking the lead on this.
I also want to paraphrase, when good or evil succeed, good and evil we do not. And given the statements made over the past few days, it's deeply concerning today, you know, those who forget history are prone to reliving, and we need to speak out, and we need to be compassionate, we need to go back to American values. And the truth always travels a little more slowly than a lie, but eventually the truth catches up. I was pretty horrified at Trump's statements, Patterson, and Durden City, and all the Republicans are saying, "We lived through that, we live here." Nothing, and you notice, nothing happened in Patterson, nothing happened in Durden City. The Arab community in Patterson was just as horrified as any other American community. So, we need to speak out, and I think this says it very eloquently. John, you did a great job on this. We need to take a stand. It's our county, it's our state, it's our country, and this is the right way, really is the right way to do it.
John, I just congratulate you and my colleagues for supporting on this. There's no dissension here whatsoever. Ron, Sam, Paige, and you let him try to address the Freeholders.
John, I obviously, Freeholder, want to thank you as well for taking the lead on this. It was an extremely well-worked and well-thought-out resolution. I think what stood out most to me was the appeal to our common humanity. You can come at this from so many different perspectives, our faiths, cultural background, but the idea that when those who are in the greatest of need reach out to those who have the resources to provide, and those resources may be held back by ulterior motives, politics, or agenda, not be acceptable to anyone. I know many of us were impacted with the images in September, a small five-year-old child, and the family on the shores, lifeless. Those are the things that I can tug at our heartstrings. I remember, Freeholder, when he called me at the moment that he called me.
and gave the President the power to respond to an unforeseen emergency refugee situation such as one involving grave humanitarian concerns. And whereas, although the United States admits only 70,000 refugees per year from a global population of more than 14 million refugees, President Barack Obama has committed to accepting 10,000 Syrian refugees in response to the shocking and tragic displacement of millions of Syrians. And whereas even this modest effort to relieve the suffering of many has been met with political opposition from elected officials and political candidates, including Governor Chris Christie, whose public remarks indicate a misunderstanding of the rigorous refugee screening process already in place, and of the cohort of Syrian refugees being admitted to the United States, of whom half are children and only 2% are single men of combat age. And whereas by attempting to refuse Syrian refugees' entrance to New Jersey and instructing state agencies not to assist the federal government in relocating Syrian refugees, Governor Christie proposes to violate the U.S. Constitution, which, as a governor and before that as the United States Attorney, he swears to uphold. Now therefore be it resolved in recognition of our common humanity and of the many communities of faith and common interest of Passaic County who would welcome and sponsor Syrian refugees if given the opportunity. Passaic County reaffirms that it is a place where all are welcome and where those fleeing persecution may find safe refuge. And be it further resolved that the county of Passaic urges departments, local businesses, and charitable organizations to work with those organizations who provide shelter and sustenance to refugee families relocating to Passaic County and integrating to our community. And be it further resolved that the clerk of the board is hereby instructed to convey copies of this motion to the Office of the President of the United States, the Governor of the State of New Jersey, the fourteen members of the New Jersey International Delegation, and the twenty others of the freehold reports in the State of New Jersey.
I would like to invite the opportunity for any of my colleagues, if they have any questions or comments regarding your position.
Well, thank you, Mr. Director, for putting together this well-thought-out, well-written resolution. It's sad that, first of all, if this is happening, we have this humanity toll taken place in Europe. I want to applaud the European countries that have opened their arms and borders against overwhelming numbers of refugees. And the tragedy of the events in Paris notwithstanding, it just shows you the difference between the leadership there in regards to the human goal and the leadership here, or some of the leadership here, that tries to compound misery being faced by these poor unfortunate individuals, who are doing what any one of us would do in the same situation to try to save our own lives, save our families' lives, and put us in a situation where we can follow the pursuit of happiness that we so cherish in our own constitution. So I want to thank you, Freeholder, for taking the lead on this.
As regards refugees, I also want to paraphrase, when good or evil succeed, good and evil do not. And given the statements made over the past few days, it's deeply concerning today, you know, those who will forget history are prone to reliving, and we need to speak out, and we need to be compassionate, we need to go back to American values. And the truth always travels a little more slowly than a lie, but eventually the truth catches up. I was pretty horrified at Trump's statements, Patterson, and Durden City, and all the Republicans are saying, "We lived through that, we live here." Nothing, and you know this, nothing happened in Patterson, nothing happened in Durden City. The Arab community in Patterson was just as horrified as any other American community. So we need to speak out, and I think this says it very eloquently, John, you did a great job on this. We need to take a stand. It's our county, it's our state, it's our country, and this is the right way, really is the right way to do this.
John, I just want to congratulate you and my colleagues for supporting on this. There's no dissension here whatsoever. Ron, Sam, Paige, and you let him try to address the Freeholders.
John, I obviously, Freeholder, want to thank you as well for taking the lead on this. It was an extremely well-worked and well-thought-out resolution. I think what stood out most to me was the appeal to our common humanity. You can come at this from so many different perspectives, our faiths, cultural background, but the idea that when those who are in the greatest of need reach out to those who have the resources to provide, and those resources may be held back by ulterior motives, politics, or agenda, not be acceptable to anyone. I know many of us were impacted with the images in September, a small five-year-old child, and the family on the shores, lifeless. Those are the things that I can tug at our heartstrings. I remember, Freeholder, when he called me at the moment that he called me, I was actually preparing a message to discuss in my congregation, what is the appropriate response to the refugee crisis, so which Freeholder Bartlett said, "That's very interesting, because let me tell you what I have in mind, it's the resolution." It's one of those moments where you're really impacted, as I discussed, with young men of different backgrounds. The idea, even in a faith-based institution like the church, the very stories that so many cling to of the individual who we celebrate on Christmas had to flee to Egypt as a refugee as a baby, because he was going to be persecuted as a child, and he talked about how could those who have a faith based on an individual whose life began as a refugee, you read the scriptures if you're aware of it, and had to flee seeking safety, how could those same people who claim to that faith now turn their backs on others? But again, I go back to that faith that we use beyond our faith, our cultural background, and it's a fact that we are all part of the human race. That we can look at the needs around the world and put our political positions aside, that we don't have to create policy in response to fear or what we see on TV, but rather based on what is right. And it is right that we would help those who are in need. Freeholder, again, I can't say enough about how I admire your role and your initiative on this. Thank you so much for taking the lead. And I, this way, to maybe break protocol a bit, and inviting Mayor Khalilah, the prosecutor department, to please say a few words.
All right, folks, good evening, and... Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and let me start by saying a simple thank you for doing what's right. Your stand, as symbolic as it might be, is the tool of combat and radicalism, because you have millions of people who are in despair, who have been killed by their own president, their homes destroyed, and somewhere, somehow, somebody has to show them compassion. And by taking this symbolic stand, that hopefully will catch a momentum throughout the state and hopefully our nation, you're doing what I think is the most powerful thing to do. And, you know, as mentioned, the governor obviously is misguided in his statement, in his desperate attempt to climb up in the polls, but we can't lose the basic principles that made America great, the principles that made my parents want to bring me here, the principles that made your ancestors want to come to the U.S. And if we don't uphold our principles, then we are taking a chance to bring our stand in down in the world. So I thank you for doing what's right, and it's this simple action that might catch momentum. You will be a trailblazer for standing up for humanity. So thank you very much, and I pray for God to bless you and bless your families. Thank you.
Colonel Counselor, I believe you wanted to have an amendment?
Yes, I would ask the board to indulge it on L-33. I made a drafty error in the resolution. The resolution dates are the memo of... L-33 is a memo of understanding between the county of Passaic and local eleven Teamsters. That resolution should read March 1st, 2015, April 1st, 2015 to March 31st, 2019. I mistakenly put January 1, and so I ask that you would indulge it in permitting us to amend the resolution, to set the correct dates on it.
Is there any reason for us coming to close session?
No, there is not, Mr. Director.
Do we have a motion to adjourn the conference room?
Over.
Moved by Deputy Director James, seconded by Freeholder Bartlett, roll call.
Freeholders Bartlett, Best, Petronio, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Laura.
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, once again, we thank you and welcome you to our Passaic County Board of Children's Freeholder Meeting, this Tuesday, November 24th, 2015. We go into our regular meeting, called upon the clerk of the board to make the announcement of the open public meeting law.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying a time, date, and location, including the annual notice adopted at the reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk, and posted in the administration building, and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Roll call.
Freeholders Bartlett, Best, Petronio, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Laura.
Here. All right, now, everyone, please stand for the education, and stand for the fact of allegiance of the law and the only citizens who remember all the men and women of God who serve in the United States. Blessed are you, Lord, in the mercy of heaven and earth. We thank you for, once again, having the opportunity to come together and do the business of the county of Passaic. We ask that you would guide us with wisdom and compassion to always make decisions, decisions that are in the best interest of all of the residents, in support of you, honor you. We thank you, Lord, for today's special meeting, and we were able to recognize and designate November as the anniversary of the Council of Rights Month. And also, Lord, as we look forward to the holiday, Thanksgiving, we ask that you would remind us all of those many things that we can be grateful for, that as we go home and spend time with our family and friends, remember just how blessed we are. And also, Lord, as today we highlighted a very special resolution, we ask that you would be a comfort and strength to all those who are seeking peace inside of their refuge. And that you would guide us as well, Lord, to remember, for those things that we enjoy and are so grateful for and oftentimes take for granted, and are always available to all, so help us to be there for those who are grateful. Praise this in your name. Freeholder Duffy, you can lead us in my honor and direction.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can please remain standing for the only citizens who remember all the men and women of God who serve in the United States Armed Forces. Thank you. Now, motions approved in the name of our November 12, 2012 meeting. Motion made by Freeholder Duffy, seconded by Freeholder Petronio, roll call.
Freeholders Bartlett, Best, Petronio, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Laura.
Yes. May I have approval of the proclamations, all as noted? Motion made by Deputy Director Bruce James, seconded by Freeholder Duffy, roll call.
Freeholders Bartlett, Best, Petronio, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Laura.
Yes. At this moment, I would like to invite my colleagues, if there are any Freeholder reports, are there any Freeholder reports?
Just wanted to wish our Freeholder Director, Detective Laura, a happy birthday.
Well, no, I would just thank the Director to you, I would take this opportunity just to, we have the good mayor here in attendance, and, you know, we throw the word hero around kind of loosely to apply to what kind of things that we really shouldn't apply to. The real heroes in our society amongst them are the people in uniform, those that protect us domestically, those who protect us militarily, but, you know, we have a situation where you have a citizen of this great country who puts himself in harm's way to help the citizens of this country. And I think you're a remarkable man, Mayor, the fact that you put yourself in harm's way to try to help people, I can't even imagine the horrors that you witnessed every time you go back and try to bring aid and stuff to the folks in Syria. So I just want to say I'm honored to be in your presence, I'm honored to be a friend, and I pray for you every time you go there, and I wish you the very best and very happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I want to thank my colleagues for your kind words about this resolution. I've spoken to each of you separately, and it's something that, for each of us in our own ways, is just deeply resonant, whether it's from our connection to the mayor or some part of our own life story or family history. It's a reminder that, you know, we were all at one time strangers in a strange land, and it's good that we can stand up for those who are struggling now. So thank all of you, and also, of course, happy birthday, Director, and kudos to you for using your event this past weekend, not only to celebrate, but also to promote the hope of those who need this holiday season. I have immense admiration for that, and to everyone, happy Thanksgiving.
I just want to share as well, I'm going to take an opportunity to highlight our Human Services Department and the efforts that were put in this week to provide Thanksgiving turkeys, as well as baskets and foods to so many needy families around the county. I know that today, in specific areas in the county, there are many Thanksgiving turkeys given out to different faith-based organizations, different community organizations, and even directly to families as they came in to help, and that's a result of many donations, contributions by the employees, and just the connections. Obviously, we all want to enjoy a great Thanksgiving, but it's wonderful to know that we're also assisting those who may not have to also enjoy a great Thanksgiving. And especially Mr. Charles Federson, who's been out in the streets for the past few days handing out those turkeys, meeting those families. It's not always easy, but the work is being done by so many, and there are so many names that we can mention. Often, we, as the elected officials, get to be the face of the county, and yet so many of these employees are the ones out there doing the frontline work, and they represent us so well, so I just want to take this time to announce, again, thank everyone who's doing that work. Moving on to communications, seconded in communications.
Motion. So moved by Freeholder Best, seconded by Freeholder LaFour. Freeholder Duffy.
I see you have two minutes.
Rock call.
Freeholders Bartlett, Best, Petronio, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Laura.
Yes, just to read the communication into record, the American Youth Dance Company requests permission to hang a banner across Ringwood Avenue in the borough of Vanacue to advertise their performance, "The Nut Breaker," at Lincoln High School on December 5th and 6th. Everyone's welcome to see it. May I have a motion to open the public portion of the meeting?
Move it.
Second.
Moved by Freeholder LaFour, seconded by Freeholder Petronio, roll call.
Freeholders Bartlett, Best, Petronio, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Laura.
Yes, at this moment, I would like to invite any member of the public, if they wish to share any comments, concerns, or questions to the Freeholders, to please come up. I remind you that you have three minutes, and would ask that you please state your name and address for the record, and I remind that everything that you say will be a matter of public record.
Seeing no one at the podium, I would...
Freeholder.
With God's name, good evening. It's a pleasure to be here to witness the human resolution that you did tonight, and I thank God for each and every one of you being those human beings that recognize the fact that we all are one people, whether we are here, there, anywhere, we're still human beings. So I want to thank you and congratulate you. At the same time, I'm coming because, yes, Freeholder Director, House Block was one of those places that Charles Federson handed out quite a few turkeys on you guys' behalf, and it was really a pleasure working with him, and I understand that you are in the process of trying to help us at the Grandparents Brothers Care Resource Center. We're trying to keep that center going and trying to keep the dream that Dr. Dixon had to make sure that people that are in need get those needs met. So I just stopped by to thank you and to say to all of you, I know I gave you tickets for our fundraiser that's coming up December 4th, and like your good colleague, we know that you all are writing your checks, because Freeholder Duffy just wrote his, so I'm here to collect your checks if you have them.
You're not going to cash it right away.
Oh, yes, yes, hard won. So I just want to thank you ahead of time for your checks that are coming to help us with this fundraiser, and to say that you please come by and visit us and see what you're doing at the Grandparents Center, because we are doing great work there, and we really appreciate the fact that you're trying to help us to continue that. I just wanted to stop by and say thank you. Okay? God bless, and happy birthday, Freeholder.
All things.
Even though you're spending it with these guys, it's a good birthday, I'm sure.
Seeing no one else at the podium, I move to close public.
Second.
Motion.
First of all, I want to say thank you all for the support Syrian refugees. And this big thing for us to see the Freeholders and the county to support the Syrian refugees. The second one, I would say a graduation for our team, the Freeholders, we are happy to see you there. And I want to say for Victor Hitler, happy birthday, and happy Thanksgiving for you all. And one more thing, thank you, Allah, for everything you do for Syrian refugees. Thank you.
Seeing no one at the podium, anyone else? Motion to close public portion, they have Freeholder Duffy, seconded by...
Freeholders Bartlett, Best, Petronio, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Laura.
Yes.
You want to...
Ms. Mohammed?
Yes.
Just wanted to, before we leave, say that...
Okay.
But we did discuss the grant allocation at our Human Services meeting. Pam Owens and her team is working on it now. There's just some paperwork that needs to be finalized, but it has the approval of the committee, and it's moving forward as soon as the paperwork is finalized. I just wanted to let you know that. And you guys are doing a phenomenal job. If anybody has the privilege to follow Ms. Mohammed or the grandparents organization on Facebook, you can see almost, what was that, either daily or weekly.
Every Monday.
Every Monday, there's lines, I mean, wrapped around the corner of people who are coming there for food and for clothes, and, you know, they're coming with bags, and I know during this holiday season that it's even more of a demand, and the fact that you guys, and I'm looking at some of the food that you're providing, where it's fresh fruits and vegetables, you know, it's just tremendous, you know. When you can get somebody not eating McDonald's or not going to McDonald's or Burger King, but when they're able to have fresh fruits and vegetables to feed their family, and you can see the demand, people literally lining up on the hundreds.
Yes.
You guys are doing a phenomenal job. So I wanted to say, keep up the good work, thank you, and congratulations all at the same time.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Lord.
Moving on, before we add, L-50, L-51, L-52, L-53, as well as amendment L-33.
Make a motion.
Seconded by Freeholder Duffy, roll call.
Freeholders Bartlett, Best, Petronio, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Laura.
Yes. And may I have a motion to add L-50, L-51, L-52, L-53, as well as amendment L-33.
Make a motion.
Seconded by Freeholder Duffy, roll call.
Freeholders Bartlett, Best, Petronio, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Laura.
Yes. And may I have a motion to add L-50, L-51, L-52, L-53, as well as amendment L-33.
Make a motion.
Seconded by Freeholder Duffy, roll call.
Freeholders Bartlett, Best, Petronio, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Laura.
Yes. May I have a motion, L-1 through L-53, including the amendment to L-33. Moved by Deputy Director James, seconded by Freeholder Petronio, roll call.
Freeholders Bartlett, Best, Petronio, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Laura.
Yes. And a motion to the personnel.
Move by Deputy Director James, seconded by Freeholder Bartlett, roll call. Freeholders Bartlett, Best, Petronio, Duffy, LaFour, Deputy Director James, Director Laura.
Yes. This is moved by Deputy Director James, seconded by Freeholder Bartlett, roll call. Freeholders Bartlett and Best.
Yes.
Petronio.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
LaFour.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Laura.
Yes.
As you know, departmental reports. Received and filed. Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the Board of Chosen Freeholders, the administrative account, we would like to wish you all very happy Thanksgiving, and you have a safe and wonderful holiday weekend with your families, hope you enjoy your games, enjoy all that you have, and I promise, I'm too much. I know I'm definitely going to say that, but at this moment, we would just take a motion to adjourn. A motion. Motion adjourned made by Freeholder Duffy, seconded by Freeholder Petronio, roll call. Freeholders Bartlett and Best.
Yes.
Petronio.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
LaFour.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Laura.
Yes.
See that small shape behind your stomach? That's your pancreas.
If you're anything like me, there's a pretty good chance you didn't even know it was there.
But all that changes when something goes wrong.
Think about this, pancreatic cancer is the forest-leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States.
More than 35,000 people will die from it this year.
The five-year survival rate is only 5%.
Picture that, walk into a room with 100 people, five years later, only five are left. That is a statistic you do not want to be a part of.
These are people just like you.
People like my daughter, Bridget.
People like our mom.
People like my husband, Andy.
People like Concha, my mom.
People like me.
Like me.
Know it, fight it, end it.